Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Willow River School today. We're awfully glad to be here tonight. I'm John Knudsen. I'll be your moderator tonight. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight. It's humbling to be asked to be the moderator of such an important event like this when only 17 others turned the job down.[34.04][34.04](Laughter) I feel really special. I always say they should know better than to give me a microphone, but they did it again, so here we go. My friends kind of know me as a grain of sand in the swimsuit of humanity, and they know that third grade was the best four years of my life. That's all you need to know. So, we're going to get going here. I will read, there's a couple of statements. Nicole Lato, "Due to unforeseen circumstances, Nicole Lato will no longer be seeking candidacy." And a note from Sandy Gurkey, "I am disappointed that due to an out-of-town commitment, I'm unable to participate in tonight's forum. I apologize for my absence." So, we do have seven people here who will be vying for the positions on the school board. The format tonight is informal, but we hope it'll be very informative for all of you. Silence your phones, please.[86.92][86.92](Laughs) Thanks, sorry. So, everybody in the audience, we hope you can understand more about these seven candidates. It'll help you make an informed decision when you vote for the three vacancies for the school board. So, our process for this evening will be that each candidate will get two minutes for their introductions and opening comments, and then we drew randomly before tonight, and we have selected an order in which questions will be answered. Written questions have come from the audience. We've selected several questions to ask tonight. Each candidate will get a minute and a half to answer those questions, and we do have some folks down here that will show our candidates a 30-second mark and a stop mark, and we do expect our candidates to be respectful of the other candidates' times, too. So, we'll conclude questions at about 8:15 and allow the candidates then to make two minutes for their, have two minutes for their closing remarks. So, my instructions to the candidates today are pretty simple. We want to keep it professional. We want to keep it civil, and if there are any personal attacks in a response, I'm going to stop you and we'll move on to the next question or the next item. My hope is that your conduct here tonight will tell the audience as much as they need to know for voting as the content of your answers. So, along with everyone here tonight, we sincerely thank you for your interest in serving the Hudson School District and all of our students as a school board member. So, good luck to each one of you. So, tonight, we're going to start. Mr. Joe Worcesterbarth.
Good evening. Thank you to the parent group for hosting this discussion tonight, and also thanks to all of you for coming. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Joe Worcesterbarth and excited to be running for a seat on the school board. My wife, Mary Kane, I moved to Hudson School District in 1993. We have three children, Luke Ross and Sophia, and they went through K through eight at St. Patrick's School across the road here, and then nine through 12 at Hudson High, and my daughter Sophia is currently a sophomore at Hudson High School. I am passionate about quality education, having gone through graduate studies and professional certification myself. I graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Oklahoma with an accounting major. I earned my CPA from the state of Minnesota, and in addition, I received an MBA from the University of Minnesota with an emphasis in finance. After graduating from Oklahoma, I accepted a position with 3M Company, and I've been, I've been with the company ever since, celebrating about a few weeks ago, my 30th anniversary with the company. My assignments within 3M have been in finance and engineering. Currently, I'm an engineering manager. I've gained a lot of experience across many different businesses, both U.S. and international. Over the course of those 30 years, I have developed analytic and communication skills that I believe will help the school board with key decisions they are faced with, especially those financial in nature. One of my key skill sets is the ability to take facts and data and turn it into pertinent management information to help with decision-making. As a school board member, I want to help clearly convey proposals to the taxpayers in an understandable format that is well-supported by the most current and financial market information. My goal is full disclosure now to avoid surprises in the future. I look forward to hearing your questions tonight, providing you with a clear understanding of my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Our next candidate is Pam Brokaw.
Hi, I'm Pam Brokaw. Thanks to everyone for attending. I want to thank the parent groups for hosting the event, all the community members who are attending tonight, and those folks who are watching the forum at home. My husband Andy and I and our two daughters Katie and Brooke moved to Hudson in 2001. Katie and Brooke both graduated from Hudson High School. I'm in human resources at 3M, and I just have celebrated 31 years with the company. In October, I finished my bachelor's degree with Rasmussen College, which was a huge undertaking for me, and I appreciate and understand the importance of education. Our family moved to Hudson in 2001 when our kids were in elementary and middle school. And one of the primary factors that influenced our decision to purchase a home in Hudson was the school district. We had heard great things about the school district, and that really was a driver for where we bought a home. Since moving to Hudson, I've been actively involved in the community with parent groups, Youth Action Hudson, the St. Cry Valley Youth Court. I was on the Hudson City Council. I'm on the cable board and park board and involved at the Lions Club. My family's been actively involved with other efforts, including Hats From the Heart, the All Dressed Up Formal Wear giveaway, and St. Cry Valley Celiac Group. I'm running for the school board because I feel strongly about the quality of education that we're delivering our kids, and also how our community is involved, and I was very pleased to see the efforts that are being made in the community engagement process. I think it's key for us as we move forward and as our community continues to grow and as it changes. So, thanks again for the time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to share my ideas.
Thank you, Pam. Our next candidate is Lowell Enerson.
Good evening. I'm Lowell Enerson, and I'm running for the Hudson School Board because I'm retired and I have the time to serve, and I believe in a quality education for all of our students. I have 25 years of experience working for boards. I understand the need for good board members. As a city administrator, I was involved in building a new community center, a new clinic, in upgrading our hospital, and passing referendums. To pass referendums, you need to get the governmental units involved. There are five governmental units in the Hudson School District. The city of Hudson, the village of North Hudson, the towns of Hudson, St. Joe, and Troy. These governmental units need to be involved in our site selection and scope of our building project. This is not just a school board problem. As governmental units, they have granted the permits for all the housing and building projects, and they are very much aware of the growth of the past and of the future growths of this, growth of this community. They also know the importance of quality schools because that's why people want to live in our district. If we would have built a new school 10 years ago, it would have cost us less, and we shouldn't pass up the opportunity of low-interest rates that we have now. We need to save the taxpayers as much as we can. Let's work together and move forward on our space needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Lowell. Our next candidate will be Kristy Vitale.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Looking around, I know very few people here, so I just want to take the first few minutes and introduce myself. My name is Kristy Vitale. I'm very excited to be here to answer your questions and hopefully gain your support. I moved to North Hudson in 2008 from a similar township outside the city of Cleveland. I very much enjoy living in this area, and I'm really looking forward to getting more involved in the community. I am currently a business development manager for 3M.[557.32][557.32](Laughter) But I have a broad background. I've worked for several different companies in several different capacities. I've been in industrial sales, I'm an operations manager, a tech service manager, I've been in marketing, and I own my business, my own business for several years. My varied experiences have led to a strength in problem-solving and in garnering consensus on cross-functional teams. Prior to joining the workforce, I graduated from John Carroll University in Ohio with a bachelor's in political science. I was blessed to have an exceptional education from grade school to high school to college. I was raised to appreciate that opportunity, and like everyone in this room, I too believe that a great education for the next generation benefits us all. I entered this race after being asked by friends to consider it, people who trust that I will do what's right. I hope by the end of the evening, you agree with them. I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Our next candidate is Sue Kattas.
Sue Kattas.
Kattas, apologies.
Anyway, I want to first of all thank the parent group for the opportunity, and thank you for coming out tonight to, and to be engaged with those of us that are on the stage. I live in North Hudson. I've lived there for, going on 32 years with Deb Monica, my life partner, and I taught at art and art history at Enver Hills Community College, and as an educator, I've dealt with controversy and collaboration centering on the needs of students. A few things that I did was to help hire faculty. I helped write specifications for a new building, and I made modifications in our department to comply with the ADA rules. Community-wise, I volunteer at the PIPs Center for the Arts and at the Pine Ridge Gardens Memory Care Unit. At the PIPs, I have served on the board, and I've also been the coordinator for the Visual Arts Council. I do not work at 3M.[695.43][695.43](Laughter) The way I see it, Hudson offers the best in arts and business. I think we take a lot of pride in our community. We do the things in our community that benefit all of us. For example, organizations like Hudson Healing Together, Boosters Rotary, the efforts with a grocery co-op, and so on. I think they've all been, or are models really for unity. The problem is that there's been no workable solution for the school issues, and we've been working on them for the last six years. The solutions that have been presented ran into impediments and obstacles and died. My professional experience as a person in education puts me in a beneficial position to be part of the solution to help with consensus, to build consensus. So, what we need is a number of comparable options on the table. They need to be clear about costs and specifics, and I have to stop. So, let's invest in our students. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much, Sue. Our next candidate is Rob Brown.
Good evenings, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Rob Brown. I'd like to thank the Parent Teacher Organization for hosting tonight. I'd also like to thank those folks at home for, for watching and participating from afar. We have a number of, of issues in our district. You know, we have several obstacles that we're contending with. You know, I think with a focus on open and broad communication, many things will come together. You know, a focus on relationships with the city, the cities, as well as the school districts. I've had the opportunity to visit with several aldermen, as well as board members in our district, to really understand from their perspective, this, this wedge in our community, is it, is it something that can be fixed? And the short answer is yes, but it takes time and commitment to get to, to that point. Transparency to the taxpayer. I think for the longest time, it's not that our school district is not fiscally conservative. It's not that they're not doing the right things by our district. The fact of the matter is, it's how it's being communicated. And I think with my professional background, and specifically, I work with the Midwest and Upper Midwest, my team, on working with municipalities, as well as school districts like ours, on taking the taxpayer dollar and maximizing any investment, whether it's through referendum or otherwise, so that we can be candidly stretch that, the investment as far as we possibly can. You know, the focus on investment is also a critical path for our school district. We talk a lot about space needs, but quite honestly, education is changing. It is changing. 21st century education, we've heard about programs, we've heard about project learning, strategic thinking. Our students today have that opportunity, but requires investment, and much of that is space. And with that, I'd like to ask for your vote, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Butch Schultz.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Butch Schultz, and I've been a Hudson resident for 46 years. Hudson's a great community with a great school system, and we are truly fortunate. Academically, we get high marks, especially in the category that I like, post-secondary school readiness, getting our kids ready to get out of the house after they leave high school. Financially, our cost per student rates 364th out of 367. You can't ask for much better than that. Now, regarding space, we got some work to do. I've been involved with education all my life. In the 60s, I was an industrial arts teacher in southern Wisconsin and a coach, and in 1969, we moved to Hudson. I took a job with 3M, 3M, in their technical training center, which was like a vocational school for 3M employees, which later on, I became the manager. In Hudson, I've been active in many organizations, mainly school and youth group-type organizations. After my kids left home, I continued to be interested in Hudson schools. In 2004, I was a member of the Facilities Task Force, and in 2006, my wife and I chaired the referendum committee for the Rivercrest Elementary School. So, why am I running for school board now? I've had conversations with frustrated teachers, the real heart and soul of our school's success. I spoke with a school administrator in the metro area about my interest in running for the board. He gave me two thoughts to consider. He said, one, can you work with the school board? And after attending a lot of meetings and knowing a lot of the school board members, yes, that's, that's definitely a yes. Secondly, he said, are you willing to compromise? And to me, folks, that's the whole key of the whole crux of the problems we've got around here today. We need a space solution. We need to compromise. We need to get this done before it starts to really affect the important things like academics and teacher retention. Thank you.
All right, so that concludes the opening remarks by the candidates. We now have questions here that have been submitted by you audience members. By the way, thank you, 3M, for sponsoring this forum tonight.[1036.63][1036.63](Laughter) And the retirement of apparently a lot of these potential board members. First question tonight, Ms. Pam Brokaw is going to start with the first answer. The question is, discuss your view of school administration. What role do they play, and how do you think they contribute to a quality education?
Thank you. I think the school administration are the leaders of our, our organizations, from the, from our superintendent to our principals and the folks who are leaders within our organization. And I think, you know, some of my, my fellow candidates have talked about the importance of relationships and, and engagement, and so I think that our leaders are key in, in our, our school district and the success that we have across the board in the schools, from engaging our teachers and our parents and community members, and also the quality of education that our children receive in the school district. I, I think they're the leaders for our, for our organization.
Very good. Thank you, Pam. Lowell, if you'd like me to repeat the question, I'd certainly be happy to do that. Sure. Discuss your view of school administration. What role do they play, and how do you think they contribute to quality education?
Well, I think the superintendent is, is very much a leader in, of the school district, very much the catalyst from the board. And principals, I have a son that's a high school principal, is very key to the school. I, I think to have the quality of the school like Hudson shows that we've had good leadership in, in the principal and administrative role of this school. I think good administrators shows you that we have a good school, and I think we have a good school, but they're key.
Very good. Thank you, Lowell. Kristy?
So, like those before me said, leadership, but it's in the day-to-day operations. The, you know, they're charged with obviously running the schools and the, and the things that happen, whether it's special extracurricular activities, things of that nature, just making sure that things run smoothly, that the students have what they need and so forth. But I think what's critical is that we recognize that what I would call the voice of the customer, the relationship with taxpayer, the relationship with the community, and, and the strategic vision really lies outside of that, not that they don't participate in that. But I think it's really important that we separate those two things because I think it gets very, very convoluted. For instance, 3M has a board of directors. When you're in the trenches on a daily basis, it's sometimes hard to see the big picture, and I think there's, that it's necessary to be able to separate those two things. One is in the trenches doing that work every day. The other group is charged with really trying to understand the direction that we're heading in and, and, you know, what's important again from the taxpayer's point of view.
Thank you, Kristy. Sue?
I see the relationship of the superintendent in the schools as a triad. There is the superintendent in a relationship with the schools and in a relationship with the school board, and I, I think that they have to work together. I also think that we need to have an excellent superintendent. I have admired the work of Mary at this point, and I know we're going to be hiring a new superintendent. I see their role as big picture, and, and I also see them as trusting the leaders at the individual schools, which of course would be the principals, to do their job.
Thank you, Sue. Rob Brown?
Administrators play a multifaceted role, and I think, from a response standpoint, something that I think may be a little bit different than the others that have already spoken, you know, they, they keep our children safe, they do the blocking and tackling, but administrators also provide that bridge, if you will, within the community to help foster communication, compromise, to, to guide not only the students within each of our schools, to lead education, to make sure that not only are we just teaching our kids, but, but preparing them for life, but they're helping build a stronger community. And administrators are critical in that regard, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Butch Schultz?
I think there's three, three obligations of the administration. Number one, we've got to keep the academics and keep our students performing at the levels that we currently are. We're doing a great job there. The second, second thing that we have to do is that we have to watch the finances, and you can't argue with our finances. Sometimes I think we should spend more money. The third thing that the administration has to do, and I think it's very critical in this community, is be out shaking hands and kissing babies and patting people on the back in the community. Community relations, I believe, are probably the key to solving many of the problems that we have. So, they're all priorities of different, different facets, and all of the administrators have a piece of that role. Some have more than others, but those would be the three things I would see we would want in administrator.
Thanks, Butch. Joe?
Trying not to repeat what everybody said, but I'd, I'd say, you know, definitely leaders, that's, that's where the administration starts, but I just want to go into something a little deeper is that, you know, I really think the superintendent and the administration, they work for the school board, in my opinion, and the school board represents the community. So, there's got to be a strong bond, this has kind of been mentioned before, too, between the administration and the community to make sure that the wishes of the community are showing up in our schools. I think for the most part, it is. You know, the numbers don't lie. Hudson's one of the top school districts in the area. I mean, if you go by a couple of metrics, and it's dangerous to just go by a couple, but the ACT scores, we're the best in the area. I think we're the best in the Big Rivers Conference if I'm not mistaken, and so there's definitely good marks there, but I think the important thing that we need to work on in administration does, and again, because they do work for the school board, is that we need to really engage the community. I've been happy to see that they do have a, a committee set up now to do that, and I think with this open communication, we can, we can, we can go from, you know, being a, a good school district to a great school district, and I'd like to see that happen.
All right, thank you. The next question, and maybe this is the reason why I'm not running for school board, I'm not even sure what this is, but I think by the question, they're hoping you do. The question is, and Lowell, you'll be the first to answer, what are your thoughts regarding Common Core?
I guess I have to be honest. I haven't studied the Common Core, and I'd be totally willing to open to study it, but I don't have an answer for you this evening.
Lowell, you and I'd be in the same boat there. Kristy, what are your thoughts regarding Common Core?
For me, regardless of what you think about the content in Common Core as far as the curriculum and, and what, what is behind all of that, to me, the danger there is, we as a state, we as a district, know best what's, you know, necessary for our kids, and I think it gets real, real dangerous for me when we start asking the federal government to tell us what's best for our kids. I think it's just a really, really dangerous line, and so what I think of Common Core is, it's, it's, it's not, it doesn't belong here, and I don't care how much federal money the government wants to give us in order to accept what they're asking us to do, but it, it doesn't allow for flexibility, and the beautiful thing about this country is the fact that we have 50 states. They should run independently. The variety is wonderful, and I'm completely against Common Core.
Thank you, Kristy. Sue Kattas?
I did look this up a little bit. It's a set, Common Core is a set of high-quality academic standards in mathematics, English, language, arts, and literacy. They see as supplemental to those courses in history, social studies, science, and the technical areas. They've been, it's been adopted in 45 states, and I think that, I think that we are in, looking at Common Core now. I think it starts in 2014 year. It's a legislative act. It's not something that the school district can start or stop. It comes down from the legislators. And one of the explanations I heard for math, for example, is that it, they, the Common Core expects math to be a mile wide and an inch deep, so that it's not like any particular aspect of math goes into great depth. One example I found about English, and I don't know when you as teachers teach Grapes of Wrath, but they suggest that it occurs in the ninth or 10th grade. So, that maybe gives you an idea of what your own personal standards would be, maybe for your curriculum. I guess I see that as, I think we're doing a good job in the public schools with the curriculum that we do have, so I'm, would have to examine it more.
Thank you, Sue. Rob Brown?
Common Core, it's a set of testing standards with the intent of allowing our children to compete in the global marketplace. You know, many of, there are those of us who perhaps don't care for Common Core. There are other of us that, others that perhaps embrace. Candidly, I think if, if we overlay Common Core with our 2025 plan with a focus on education, focus on 21st century learning, you know, I think they, candidly, they go hand in hand. From a, from an educational perspective, it's not something that we have a choice on at this point, and so being able to make the most of the situation that we have and develop our children so they can compete is, is important, and those are my two cents.
Thank you, Rob. Butch Schultz?
Common Core, I think, is something that is probably the most mis marketed and misunderstood concept in education that has come along in a thousand years. Common Core is a set of standards. For instance, right here, I've got a little green chart, and I know you can't see it down there, but you see that red line on the, on the right-hand side? That's Wisconsin, and the, the green ones are states that, that meet a standard. And one of the standards, this is for first grades, for instance, says, I'm going to be able to identify geometric shapes in the first grade. That's Common Core. It says you got to identify that when you're tested. Now, how do you teach it? The school, it's up to the school to decide how I teach it. So, we hear Grapes of Wrath and all these things. Hey, that's the local school that's decided that. We hear these horror stories about sexual things taught to first graders. That's the school that decides that. It's also my understanding that we can opt out of Common Core if we want to. I spoke with a couple of individuals at State Department of Public Instruction. My understanding is one school opted out in the state of Wisconsin this year. So, we've always had state testing, I believe. This is just the test. This is just the test. How we get our students there, that's the choice of the local school. So if you don't like what they're teaching, talk to the principal, talk to the teacher.
Thank you, Butch. Joe?
Common Core, well, I actually did review about our video on it. And so I wouldn't say I've got in-depth knowledge of it, but I would say, based on what I saw, is that if Common Core is about standards like Butch just mentioned, and raising up, you know, getting all schools to a certain school level to give a quality education as a whole, to improve the quality of education, I'm for that type of concept. But I don't see Common Core, and I hope it's not goes that way, where it's actually trying to control what the schools do. I would not like to see autonomy taken away from the schools. I think there should be enough flexibility built in, because we are different communities. We operate in different ways. And that's where I'd like to draw the line. So I agree again with Butch that if it's a standard, again, I just know enough to be dangerous, you know, with our video, but if it's a standard to, again, raise the bar for all schools and get them to a certain level, then I'm all for it. But if it's a control mechanism to take away autonomy of the schools, then I'm not for it.
Thank you, Joe. Pam?
I think if it's a mandate, if it's telling us how we are going to educate our kids, that's a separate bucket, but I think that it's good to have benchmarks or something that helps us ensure that our children are at the level or meeting the education standards that they need to have where they're at in school. I think that we need to ensure that we've got rigor and that our children are getting to the level that they need to be in their grade. I don't believe that one size fits all, so if it's a mandate that will tell us how we'll be doing things in the Hudson School District, I really don't support it. But I think if it helps us do some benchmarking and ensure that our kids are meeting the standards and levels that have been established, it's something that we should use to complement or to bring in with what we're currently doing.
Thank you, Pam. Sorry for the sound there, folks. We're having a few issues there. If each of the candidates also can pull that microphone down so it's pointed at your mouth during speaking, I see a few people raising their hands to their ears for you. So just speak loudly, please. All right, the next question, and Kristi, you will start with answering this one first. There are an awful lot of questions regarding schools and building and expanding. The simple question is, what is your solution to solve our space issue?
That's like five questions. Well, okay, so there's a number of different things that we can do, and there are capacity issues in there, you know, everybody's concerned about it. There's, again, I think, a commonality. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't think that there's a problem that we need to take a look at. But I think that, you know, when you talk about being creative, right? So my idea in the near term is, let's be creative. So whether you, at the high school level, schedule different times, and people smarter than I can figure this out, where the classes are actually led out at different times, so there's not so much congestion in the halls, whether we allow open campus and older, you know, seniors and juniors to leave campus at lunchtime to have lunch, because there's not enough time in the cafeteria. What I understand is being done at the middle school with the elementary school that's connected is wonderful. I think that they should be applauded. And again, these are things that are short-term. When you talk about long-term, I don't have the answers, but I can guarantee you something. If I'm sitting in that school board, I'm going to look at all of the information, listen to all of the people that have to contribute, and I'm going to do my best to work with the people on the board to make sure that we make a decision that makes sense for everyone. In particular, that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and that we're not doing something that, you know, is nice for the minority, but that really makes sense and addresses, I'm sorry, the trades. I'll get into that another time. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Sue. You're next.
Thank you. I think that we should have as many options or a number of options on the table. I think the taxpayer is expecting to see very clear information about the costs and about the specifics, and any information that they can get to totally understand each option that we might offer. I think the idea of offering several options is a good idea, because it's like going out to buy a car, you know? You can't go say, "I'm going to go to the auto show and buy such and such." You really need to look at a number of options. And I think we need to communicate with the public. I also think that we need to listen to the public, and I think that our communities' voices need to be heard, and I think that their input should be seen with high regard and respect. And how we go about it exactly, I'm not 100% sure. But I do think that we have to try and garner information from the community on as many different ways as possible. Not everybody has a computer, you know, you know where I'm going with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Rob, what is your solution to solve our space issue?
You know, first and foremost, fiscal responsibility is important. Voice of the district, every person, whether they be in this room throughout the district. It's an opportunity for the district, the people in the district, to participate in what do we want our district to look like? There's an initiative underway to help define public outreach and really better understand what those requirements are. You know, to sit here today and for any one person to indicate what they think their solution is, candidly, would be a mistake, in my opinion. The district is large. We continue to change and evolve. From an education standpoint, education changes. Our children are changing. And so public outreach is critical, balanced by transparency with the community, as well as public outreach.
Very good. Thank you, Rob. Butch, before you start, I'll remind candidates, if you can, after you're done speaking, push your button off to shut the mic. We'll try that to see if it helps the sound for everybody. So Butch, you're next. What is your solution to solve our space issue?
Okay, I would say first, we've got to start with a clean slate. Don't throw out what we've done in the past, but let's start at the beginning. Look at the current facilities, their capacity and actual enrollments, and see where they sit. Evaluate that. Obtain and agree on, and this will be impossible, a reasonable growth projection that everybody agrees to. Formulate a short list of potential options, from building a new school to expanding our existing facilities. Explore the use of the land around the current high school. EP Rock, EP Rock could be a great area for consolidate all our athletic fields and all the other facilities. Collaborate with the city and the county. Is there potential of shared facilities and land parcels? For instance, the county land up in the corner here, the city and the softball fields, maybe we could work something out with the city. There's a lot of parcels around. Present the facts and options in a simple, understandable manner that shows, here it is, and here's what it's going to cost. Present the options with ballpark figures, so we can see what it'll do to our taxes. And finally, then somehow come to a consensus. And I know the school board is really working to go in that direction right now, to get input, to look at options, and go in that direction, so.
Thank you, Butch. Joe, what's your solution to solve our space issues?
Well, John, to be honest with you, I need to answer this question by asking another question. You know, what is the need? And what I mean by that is, you know, until your need is defined, it's really difficult to support or jump into a solution. You don't want to do that. You know, that's the worst thing you can do is jump to a solution. And, you know, for example, it has been stated that overcrowding is creating a need for secondary school space. But what do we exactly mean by overcrowding? And what I'm saying is, what are the specifics? The what, the where, the whens? You know, we need to understand those before we try to go into the house to see how to solve it. And, for example, what would a space utilization analysis tell us? You know, how efficiently are we using our current space? Have we done one of those? If we did, I'd like to see it. But I'd also, what are the key market indicators telling us, such as enrollment, such as cohort growth? What is that telling us right now? Where is that going? Where is it trending? All these facts and information, they've got to be clearly understood in very concrete terms, and not generalizations, very concrete terms, so that you can take action on them. There's got to be actionable. As a school board member, that's what I want to do. I want to work to ensuring that the relevant facts and information are used to develop a well-supported business case for each option that is presented. And that's what I want, shared with our friends and neighbors. Be very open about it. Let's talk about this, and let's talk about it with facts and figures, not with just gut feel and emotion.
Thank you, Joe. Pam Brokaw?
As far as the space, I'm going to ask you to repeat the question.
Yep. The question, Pam, is what is your solution to solve our space issues?
I think gaining an understanding of what the issues are is going to be key. Again, I'm pleased that there's a community engagement process involved to help get community input, but I think it starts from the inside and taking a look at if we're maximizing the space that we currently have. Green space around the schools, the configuration of our schools. We've got K5. Would K6 help us provide some relief at the middle school and high school level? We've got a K6 through 8 configuration right now. Could we look at 6 through 9? We're at 9 through 12. Would an 8, 9, or an 10, 12 buildings help us? I think as far as overcrowding in the common areas of the school, we talked, one of my fellow candidates mentioned open lunch. Can we do something like that to provide some relief in the common areas? I think really gaining an understanding of what the need, though, is, is going to be key in what our growth will be. We don't want to build a building to have it be empty down the road.
Terrific. Thank you, Pam. Lowell?
Well, I don't have the solution, but I think how we proceed is the consultants need to work with the school and the local elected officials. There's no doubt about it that our junior high was built back in 1963, and our senior high was built back in 1974. And something that's 40 and 50 years old really needs to be addressed. All our school districts around us, Somerset, New Richmond, St. Croix Central, River Falls, and Prescott, have all addressed the fact of their senior high and have solved that. So I think we can solve it. We do have a space problem. I don't have the answers. But if we sit down, like we did back when I was a city administrator, with all people in the community, and decided what size community center you wanted, and come to an agreement and move forward. But, so I don't have the answer, but I definitely feel that we have a space problem, and that we need to get everybody involved and working to solve this problem. I just think we can't continue to pretend that we haven't had double our growth in St. Croix County over the last 40 years. We have had. 36,000 people have moved into our county, and we really need to address it. So I think we do have a space problem, but I'm open, and if I was on the board, this is the way we proceed.
Very good. Thank you, Lowell. All right, our next question. Sue Katas is going to answer this one, and this one gets a little more personal for each of you candidates. Describe a situation where you led a group with opposing views and reached consensus. What methods would you use to encourage board and community communication and cooperation?
Well, having said that I've helped hire people, this is what we do. We give them a situational question to answer. Okay, where I've had opposition. Well, actually, I had opposition to some extent with an individual I worked with for about 30 years. And I always described it as like being...
We aren't going to have that much time, Sue.
Well, anyway, moving right along. Actually, what it came down to is I decided one day to just go in and talk to the person. It was the end of the day. I went in, and I said, "This is what the students are saying that's going on in your teaching and our department, et cetera, et cetera." And they were very receptive. And then there were times when there wasn't as great reception. But here's what we did. We decided that on the things that counted to get the department always working functionally and for the benefit of the students, we always talked about budget and sometimes individual problems with students and so on. So we always came together for what was external and, you know, outside of the personal and the emotional.
Thanks very much, Sue. Rob, I'll read it again. Describe a situation where you led a group with opposing views reach consensus. What methods would you use to encourage board and community communication and cooperation?
As I mentioned earlier, professionally, I work with school districts and municipalities through a ninth state area. There was a larger school district that I've worked with recently. Part of their community was, a large majority of their, the population was Hispanic, being taught out of double-wide trailers. There was a need, a substantial need for deferred maintenance, infrastructure, new schools. The Hispanic population was not terribly supportive of pursuing a bond. The question was, what's in it for us? What's in it for me? And we were able to sit down with leaders from the local community, talk through really what they were looking to achieve, and able to help get that bond referendum passed. But not only passed that bond referendum, we saved them approximately 15%, which was leveraged to build a school, same bond funds, without any additional impact to the taxpayer. So it was communication. It was voice of customer, voice of client, if you will, and really understanding the proper engineering solution to drive down cost and build infrastructure that was required.
Thanks, Rob. Butch?
Well, I'd have to go back and look at my 3M days. In the early 90s, we had an organization that was made up of 3M writers and 3M trainers and 3M curriculum developers. And a couple of us put together a proposal to eliminate the 3M employees and outsource the function. And we did it on a financial basis, on a financial cost-saving basis. And what we ended up doing was basically eliminating about 10 to 20 3M jobs, partnering with an outsourced organization. In the long run was, we made a big savings for the company. Now, was it popular? Not to those folks that lost their jobs, obviously, but our goal at 3M is to make money. So it wasn't a popular thing to do, but it was very, very functional. And it went on to be able to, we were able to expand what we did outside of our little organization at 3M to sell our services through the whole company. And it was ultimately a great success. Just prior to my retirement, I received an award from the company, Administrative Award, called the Pyramid of Excellence, that they give for administrative things that you have done, innovation. And so that was my biggest moment.
All right. Thank you, Butch. Joe, would you like me to read the question? Do you got a handle on it?
Okay.
Help yourself.
Yep, thanks, John. Yeah, kind of going to my 3M days, which I'm currently in, is I wasn't financed for 24 years, so, and especially the position I'm in now, I work with a lot of project teams, and we typically have a lot of opposing views on that. And the best thing I found that always works, you always go back to, and I typically play that role on a team, especially in my finance days, I did, is getting back to the facts and the information. That's typically the best way to get everybody on board. And what I mean by that is, is that I kind of always looked at myself as Mr. Spock of the team, for you Star Trek fans out there. Take the emotion out of it. That's what you've got to try to do. Because everybody comes in with, they got their view of what they think the best option is. And I found out, again, the best way is that, let's get down to the facts. Let's look at the, not the data, let's look at the information. What are the trends telling us? What is everything telling us? And then let's make a decision. And I found out that that seems to work the best, because figures don't lie. And facts don't lie. That's why they're facts. So, you know, that's what I would do on the board, and I would play that role. I would play that role. And again, the Mr. Spock, let's take the emotion out, let's de-bias the information, and let's make the best decision for the community.
Thank you, Joe. Pam, describe a situation where you led a group with opposing views reach consensus, and what methods would you use to encourage board and community communication and cooperation?
Well, I've had the opportunity to work with diverse groups of individuals at all ages, and I think coming to consensus are really, really helping everyone feel like they're engaged in the process and being able to share their ideas, and also their ideas are respected and... And also their ideas are respected and are valued as much as anyone else's are key in helping folks come to an agreement and move things forward. I think that taking, taking the personal aspect out of it and ensuring that you're working with accurate information and facts, in some cases, that's not easy depending on the subject or what you're trying to come to agreement on is. But I think it's very important for everyone to feel like their opinions matter and that they're being heard as you're coming to a decision.
Very good. Thank you, Pam. Lowell?
As a city administrator, when we built our community center, we, it was similar to what I'm hearing now in this school district. You had your people who said yes and the people who said no. And sometimes that's pretty far apart. And so what I did is just bring all those who were really opposed and those who were really for together and started meeting and talking and looking at the facts and finding out how we can come, some wanted the best community center and some didn't want to spend any money. And by just having meetings and having patience and working with a commitment to solve the problem, we solved the problem. It was amazing. After you get together, rather than everybody running around doing their talking on the street, get them into the building, get them into a room, get them talking. So I definitely worked harder on getting those who were opposed than those who were for because it seemed like those that were opposed really, didn't really want to sit and talk and solve their problems. So, but anyway, it worked out well and everybody was happy and those that were opposed were probably more happy than the ones that were supportive when we got done.
Thank you, Lowell. Kristy, would you like me to repeat it or have you got a handle? You're good?
Thanks.
Thank you.
So one of the parts of my job to, at times, lead new product development teams and there was one in particular that was, that stands out above all because I was wrong and I had to admit it, right? So that's when you talk about coming to consensus and getting people to agree when they're very much opposed. We had a new product and I believed in my heart that it was a great product and we had people who worked very hard. We made a small acquisition. These people, it was their heart and soul. And I was the typical Italian mom and very protective of these people and didn't want, you know, we just wanted this to succeed. And at the end of the day, again, I was leading the team. What I, what we did was continue to take, try to take the emotion, everything everyone said, right? You try to take the emotion, you look at the facts. And we sat together and we made sure that we understood what objective questions we could ask of the customer. We went out there and we went out together, people who opposed and people who were for it, and we listened. And when you do, when you do that and you realize it is what it is, right? You can make the best product in the world, but if no one's going to buy it, it doesn't matter. And so we killed the project, which is a very difficult thing to do after a couple of years, sitting in a room together, working very hard on something. But that was the right decision and that's what we did.
Thanks very much. Okay. Next question, Rob Brown. You'll be the first to answer. What are the school district's strengths and challenges when it comes to serving students at a level that will keep them competitive here and abroad? So again, what are the school district's strengths and challenges when it comes to serving students at a level that will keep them competitive here and abroad?
You know, our school district has done some pretty remarkable things, you know, from a fiscal responsibility perspective. We continue to under levy at rates not seen, not only in the state of Wisconsin, but, you know, candidly, from my experience throughout the region. I mean, we under levy at greater dollar amounts than even the school district in Madison. Fantastic from a fiscal responsibility perspective. And with, with the funds that we do leverage, you know, our test scores continue to be strong, not the strongest within our conference. We continue to add college-level courses at high school, something I never saw when I was going to high school, way back once upon a time. But that said, from a challenge perspective, we continue to move into, and I've said this, 21st century education. We talk about this 2025 plan. We've done remarkable things getting to, to the points that we are, helping our children do more, critical thinking. There's entrepreneurship being taught today. Having the, the space and the investment in that space that will help foster that 2025 plan, I think is critical.
Thank you, Rob. Butch Schultz?
Well, I think, Rob said it, 2025. I think the 2025 vision and having goals, long-term goals and objectives set for the school, just like any business, it gives you a good roadmap and where you want to be. I think they're doing many things. I don't know the specific names of the things, but I, I saw some pictures where they had created a project and it was a kayak carrier, something like that, using innovation. People, many engineers getting together and coming up with a solution. I think these, these things right here, these academies that they're running right now that focus on a specific job market or an area of the industry are really 21st century thinking and training for our students. And of course, giving the opportunities to take college classes, things of that nature. But I think we've got a very innovative staff and faculty and they're doing many, many innovative things.
Thank you, Butch. Joe, you're next.
Yeah, that, one of the great strengths I saw was, boy, just this last spring, I don't know if you know about Project Lead the Way. You know, that's one of the academies that they have at the school. I think they've got healthcare, they got STEM. And I think Project Lead the Way, not quite sure, might be part of STEM, but my son was involved with it four years. He's going pre-engineering right now at UW River Falls, but he went through the program. But you talk about a great program. They actually started with a project and they actually had to make a business presentation at the end. And when I went, when I watch his business presentations, it was like I was at three M watching him. It was incredible. And that was, and I mean, they got grilled like we do at three M too. I mean, there was a University of Minnesota professor that was just giving it to those guys and they were up there taking it and going toe-to-toe with them. It was amazing to see. So that, that's a great strength and I know we've got those programs going on. The challenge I think we have is how do we get that to more students? I mean, the thing that really kind of bothered me about what I saw there, there was only maybe 15 or 20. And, and there were no, there were no women in that either, which I'd like to see more. How do we reach more of the students with those type of programs? Because I'll tell you that hands-on, like for example, my son, Kurt Beinlick was his mentor and Kurt Beinlick, if some of you know, he's an executive at three M, he got to rub elbows with Kurt. And I'll tell you, engineering interns at three M don't even get that high a level exposure. So that was pretty neat to see and I'd like to see more of that and how we reach more students.
Thank you, Joe. Pam, the question again is, what are the school district's strengths and challenges when it comes to serving students at a level that will keep them competitive here and abroad?
I think some of our greatest strengths and our assets are teachers and the folks who are involved with our children at the schools every day. And that includes community members who come in and interact with the kids at elementary and middle and high school levels. Parents who are actively involved and engaged, I think that that, those are key to our success. I think another strength that we have is that we're surrounded by fabulous businesses that we have the opportunity to interact with and give our kids exposure to. I think that the willingness of the school district to try new things. I know my youngest daughter was involved in an independent study program that gave her an opportunity to be self-directed and to do some research and give a presentation and really helped her build some essential skills. The academies that are in place provide a great opportunity for our kids, but how do we expand them and make sure that the kids who are in the middle of the road have the opportunity to try some of the very unique opportunities that exist? One size doesn't fit all. How do we help ensure that everyone's being touched? And I'd love to see increase in service learning. I think that's a huge opportunity for us. We do great programs, but I think service learning is key for our kids and it helps them as they move forward.
Thank you, Pam. Lowell?
Well, I too agree with the 2025 plan. I think it's a great plan. It's really what's making this school district strong. I think our students have the opportunity for college and vocational school before they're out of high school. It's great. It's going to save a lot of money for them. But I think probably the big challenge is making sure that we retain these quality teachers that are doing this great job. So I think we got a lot of great things going, but we, we really need to look for the future that we have competitive salaries to keep our, our good teachers in our district.
Very good. Thank you, Lowell. Kristy, you're next.
So I echo many of the things that were said here and quite frankly, as someone who's newly getting involved with this community, looking out here and seeing for a primary, for a school board, the people that are watching and certainly at home as well, I think it's exceptional, the involvement that our community has in our school system. I think it's a tremendous strength. As a challenge and one that's very near and dear to my heart, I have a 26-year-old nephew who I adore who lives with me. He has school loans that keep him living with his aunt, right? Trust me, he'd rather live somewhere else. I may be a good cook. But he has, his school loans, these kids are drowning when they come out of four-year. We have to get rid of the stigma of not going to a four-year school. If you don't have to go to a four-year school to be educated for what you want to do, you know what? There's no shame in being a mechanic. There's no shame in being, a CNC mill operator makes $100,000 a year. Is there shame in that? There are so many things these kids can do and we do not present, and it's not unique to us, but it, it's a problem in this country. We have to get away from that. These kids have to know that there's other options and other good options for them. And we need to do a better job of making those opportunities available at the, at the high school level.
On behalf of all of us technical school graduates, I thank you. Sue, you're next.
I think that major strengths are our teachers. I think we have very excellent teachers here. And I, I've heard, as I've been speaking with parents, I hear that the teachers really care about the students and care about learning. I'm excited about the STEM program and I'm excited about some of the programs that help students in the transition from high school to college. I'm a college teacher, so I think that with the AP programs and some of the other ones that exist, I can see that that transition helps them shift from, you know, having to have hall passes to, you know, working independently in a college situation. I think the challenges go back again to trying to support those efforts by our teachers to look at options for some kind of facility improvement or change that improves the learning environment or creates a learning environment that supports what they're trying to do. The dynamic that many of us went through growing up is very different today with the technology and the movement and, you know, knowing more about how some students work better in large groups, some work better in small groups. And so I think we have to look at that full spectrum and examine all the options for the changes that we need.
Thank you, Sue. All right. Our last question that we'll ask for the candidates before our closing statements. Butch, we'll start with you. Your question will be, all of the questions will be, if state funding for the school district were reduced, how would you go about addressing the budget shortfall without sacrificing quality?
If state funding, it's a balance. In Minnesota, state funding is different than it is Wisconsin. That's why when people come across the border, they complain about our high real estate taxes in Wisconsin. Our formulas are different. If state funding goes down, the only way we're going to keep our schools at the same level they are is to raise local taxes. Now, I hope that that certainly doesn't happen. What do you do besides that? Well, that would be a community thing if we have to start cutting school programs. I dare say, I don't think there's a school board around that would want to do that without the community behind it. So to me, I don't think there is an option. Maybe we'll, maybe we will tax, what's that name of that athletic support company out there? More. Sorry about that.
Three M. Sorry. All right, Joe, again, if state funding for the school district were reduced, how would you go about addressing the budget shortfall without sacrificing quality?
Well, we're kind of used to that three M because our budgets always get cut. So what you do is you go back to the reprioritization process. You know, what, what is your, what is your most important programs? And try to keep those going and, and see what funds are left and, you know, hopefully you can make cuts elsewhere and try to balance it and keep as much as you can. Because I agree with Butch, I hope that doesn't happen because I think we got a really nice school here, you know, really, I mean, my, two of my boys are in college now and doing quite well from their education in Hudson. And my daughter's on her way as sophomore in high school, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we don't face, we don't come to those hard decisions. But if you do, you get back to the nuts and bolts. You know, you get back and look at your priorities and decide which ones stay, which one go. You draw that line. Tough decisions to make, but hopefully we'll never get there, like Butch says, so.
Thank you, Joe. Pam Brokaw?
I think if there was a decrease in state funding, we would need to take a hard look at, at where we're spending money and our budget and do some, as Joe mentioned, some reprioritization of what we're doing. And then also bring in some creativity. If we're not getting funding from the state, what can we do to offset some of the items that have costs associated with them? I think, you know, is there an opportunity to bring in more community involvement or volunteer, you know, where do you, where do we need to do some reductions? Hopefully it's, it won't happen, but how can we be creative with this? Also, are there grants that we can apply for? Are there businesses that offer, that we could develop partnerships with that would help us bring in some funding to help keep things going? If we've got a program that we need to potentially eliminate because of the costs associated with it, is there another resource that we could, could utilize to help keep that program going and also to help gain some funding for it? But I think being creative and taking a look at the big picture is going to be key.
Thank you, Pam. Lowell?
Well, I, I agree. I hope the state doesn't back out. I hope we continue to be partners in educating our children. But if the state did back out and it looks like maybe they're looking at reducing our funding, why, we would have to prioritize where we could cut. And if we can't cut, again, it would go back to raising the taxes locally. So hopefully the state doesn't back out in their partnership with the local school districts and we could, and we can continue to provide a quality education. But we definitely would have to sit down and hopefully we'd bring a lot of the parents in and work with the school district and prioritize what we could cut. And what we couldn't cut, hopefully we would raise local taxes because we'd want to keep the quality of education that we have in Hudson going and not reduce the quality of education.
Thank you, Lowell. Kristy?
So I'm with Pam. You know, it's about creativity. It's about, you know, doing things like, we're one of the only school districts in the area who don't have corporate sponsorship of baseball fields and things of that nature, right? There's a lot of things that we do that we can ask the community for help. We're, we're as big a, a part of the community as, as these businesses around here. They, they count as much as we count on them, they count on us as well to turn out young men and women who are ready for work. I think creativity in general, but you know, if it comes down to it, there are things that, you know, maybe it's pay-to-play, there's many, many different options. But I think it's doable and, I mean, echoing what everyone else says, prioritization and creativity.
Very good. Thank you, Kristy. Sue?
Well, first of all, I would expect the state to give us a very clear reason why state funding would be, you know, withdrawn. And also I think it would be great if our community could communicate with those that represent us in Madison and Milwaukee and have them justify why this fastest-growing county in the, in the state of Wisconsin would not be receiving or continue to receive the funding that they have been. I would have a little suspicion if there, now that I'm going to sound like a conspiracy theory, but I'd have suspicions, what's going on? What else is, what other things are out there as a plan coming from above? I think that our community would come together like it always does. I mean, I think we have a lot of civic pride here. So I think if it came down to that, I really could see us mustering and meeting and machinating and whatever to come up with some solutions to keep the quality of our schools going because we are, we've received a lot of recognition here in science. because we are, we've received a lot of recognition here in science and in many other areas. And I wouldn't want to see that compromised. So I wouldn't go for compromise right away.
Thank you, Sue. Rob?
You know, it's an interesting question. You know, if you look at, for instance, the state of Kansas, the public school system on whole, on whole, is in the process of considering whether or not they sue their governor because of the dramatic cut in funding. So it's happening. That said, there are creative districts who are reaching out to business today. They're working with large businesses, talking about, we have STEM, we have engineering programs. For instance, Hudson today has a relationship with 3M. So from a sponsorship perspective, what does that mean financially? And would they be willing to talk? And I would bet they would because it's happening elsewhere. It doesn't have to come out of the pockets of the taxpayer. That said, if it were to, it's an opportunity for the district to come together. We're talking about this community outreach. It's an opportunity for us as a community, if necessary, depending on the amount of time available, to talk through and understand if there are to-be cuts, what would we, you know, what would we expect? And is the district willing to give up art, music, those things, and potentially consider an operating levy if that were necessary? But I do think business, foundations, reaching out into the community is a critical path for us if necessary.
Thank you, Rob. And that's the time we have for the questions today. So now we will start with the closing statements, and we'll reverse our order. So Butch, you were seventh on the opening. You are number one right now.
Thanks for the warning. Thanks, John, and the rest of you that made this evening possible. HSD's 2025 initiative, if you haven't read it, you should read it. "Preparing each student for post-secondary success or life after high school," as I call it, "was intended to be a vision for our students. But after I really got into it and studied it, I believe it can be a great roadmap for our community as our schools move forward trying to solve the issues that we have, especially the space dilemma." So in closing, I'd like to refer to three of the beliefs that are stated in this initiative. First, the Hudson School District believes that collaboration and teamwork are keys to success. We in Hudson need to establish teamwork and trust across the community. We need city and township officials, school administrators, teachers, students, parents, all to sit down and talk. And not only talk, but be willing to compromise. The second one of the beliefs I want to point out, the Hudson School District believes that personal integrity and ethical behavior is an expectation of students and staff. Well, folks, in my book, that tells it all. That's how we should be living our life. This should apply to all folks in the school and the community who at least claim to be adults, period. As we move forward, especially looking at space solutions, we know there'll be doubters. But what do you say we all as a community, the staff, the board, the community, cast aside the sneers and the slams and support the needs? While bricks and mortars don't guarantee academic success, ultimately, they become a factor. Let's all be willing to compromise and come up with a reasonable solution. And finally, Hudson School District believes education is a partnership between staff, parents, and community, which I think we all believe. I hope you realize I'm a committed advocate of public education. I believe it's one of the greatest assets of this country, the United States of America, and I hope you'll help us support it.
Thank you, Butch. Rob Brown, you're next.
Thanks. You know, when Tara, my wife, and I moved here back in 2002, you know, the community was, was a little bit different. We've grown with the community. We now have three children. I have a daughter Carly at Rivercrest. I have a daughter Maggie at the middle school and Riley, my son, at the high school. Sort of a trifecta of education, if you will. You know, with, with the time that I've spent in our district through junior achievement, the time I've spent teaching large group Bible study with our children at Bethel Lutheran, there's, there's, there's always moments of awe in our community. And taking a step back and looking at the, or the community leaders that I've had a chance to spend time with, City Hudson, Towne Hudson, North Hudson, Troy, you know, not to mention some of the school district leaders, the board members in this room tonight. It's, it's interesting in that everybody is interested in change. Everybody is interested in compromise. It's about stakeholder equity. It's about every person in this room. And how do we make sure that information provided is in fact something that is understandable and recognizable by everybody in this room, that there are no perceived hidden agendas when it's not necessarily the case. It's simply our district leadership, they, they know the business of education, but the average taxpayer candidly doesn't want to know that. They simply want to know when they get their tax bill what that means. Period. That's what it means. And with that transparency, and I believe with my professional background, I've seen boards work, I've seen city councils work, I know what doesn't work. And I hope to earn your vote on February 17th and hopefully on April 7th as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Suketas?
Okay, thank you. To the parents group again for organizing this tonight, to Diane especially, who's the president. I think we need to have in place incentives that help to retain the experienced and highly qualified teachers and teaching staff. I'm committed to representing all the interested parties. They've been called stakeholders now, but interested parties in investigating the overcrowding in our high school and our middle school. The word interested means that those parties have a willingness to be attentive to the solution and to be helpful and to be proactive and to be open-minded. We need a creative solution to continue the culture of excellence that's already been achieved by our students. I'm committed to a fact-based initiative with clear costs broken down to us taxpayers in an understandable way. Not everyone reads spreadsheets. The plan must have teeth and must be embraced by the community. I favor discourse and action to do whatever we can do to keep our schools strong. And we can achieve that, I think, first of all, by rallying the civic pride. I mentioned that earlier, that we've witnessed in some of our organizations. So in closing, I just would say that I prefer options to obstacles.
Thank you, Sue. Kristi, you're up.
Almost immediately after the candidates for school board were announced, I began receiving mail from a number of organizations, all with a list of questions. I was struck by the fact that even though they were clearly on opposing sides often, their stated goals were basically the same. Throughout the past few weeks, I've reached out to a number of people in our community to get different points of view on what the district needs. I spoke with parents of children in our schools, teachers, graduates, some students, senior citizens, and even our superintendent. And like the letters I received, I was again struck by the fact that stated goals were very similar. It is in fact in how we reach these goals that there are clear disagreements. We all want the children of this district to have facilities that will allow them to receive a quality education. We all want schools to be secure, the athletic teams, band and choir to have the appropriate facilities, and for the district to be poised to attract the best educators possible. I am coming to you as a candidate without bias, with no predetermined commitment to any particular solution. I have no desire to be boxed in by endorsements or groupthink. I am interested in doing what is right and giving our students the additional education of seeing us be good stewards of each other's money. I have the luxury of having less skin in the game than many of you because I don't have a child in the school district. And therefore, I have an ability to address each issue with objectivity. I hope this evening was informative for all of you. I know it was for me. If you liked what you heard from me, I would ask you to tell your neighbors and friends, and I would very much appreciate your vote. Have a great evening, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Kristi. Lowell?
I want to thank Diane. She's done a great job organizing this, putting it together and communicating to us and to the parent group. You know, we have a wonderful community here. Hudson has a great downtown with lots of restaurants. We have a theater. We have a beautiful library, and we have a beautiful waterfront. Up on the hill, we have our box stores, restaurants, more shops, a new hospital, a new clinic, and best of all, Fleet Farm. Hudson School District offers a great K through 12 education, but the junior high was built in '63 and the senior high was built in '74. These two buildings were connected in '94 to create a current high school. These buildings are 40 and 50 years old and are not adequate for today's learning environment. Senior high school is the last step in their education before they enter their adulthood and begin their future. It's an important step, and we need to make sure our students are equipped for the future. I ask for your vote and your support on February 17th, and I will work hard to bring the Hudson School District together to solve our space problems. By working together, we can have the best schools for our students, our teachers, our staff, and our taxpayers. I would like you to meet my wife Kathy, who is my support, and I thank you for this opportunity this evening.
Thank you, Lowell. Pam Brokaw, your closing comments?
Thank you. I want to thank the parent groups again for all, all the effort you put into organizing the forum tonight and for, to Diane for the communication and everything she's done. All the community members who came out tonight and the folks watching at home. John for moderating the event, you did a great job. And my fellow candidates, I learned a lot about the other folks who are running for office, and I appreciate the information that was shared. And I, I want to thank the school district and the community for what my family has received since we moved to Hudson in 2001. It's been a great experience. My, my children have, have met wonderful people. They've been surrounded by adults who are really, really passionate about ensuring that, that the children in our school district and, and our community do well and that they have great experiences. And that's through organizations that are in our community. And for that, I'm very grateful, and that's one of the reasons that prompted me to run for school board. We have some tremendous opportunities, but we also have some challenges that we're going to be facing with our secondary space, helping to ensure that we're retaining and attracting top talent. Our teachers are one of our greatest assets, and we want to make sure that we hang on to them. And how do we, how do we bring in top talent when our teachers retire or leave? And I think at key is ensuring that our students receive a world-class education and that they have the opportunity and experiences that'll benefit them long after they leave the Hudson School District. Not everyone is, is destined to go to a four-year college. There's wonderful opportunities that don't require a four-year degree. And how do we help ensure that all of our children recognize that there are tremendous opportunities for them? Thanks again.
Thank you, Pam. Joe?
I also want to thank the parent group and Diane for organizing this and all the people who came tonight. And John, I got to say, every time you have an event where there's a mic in your hand, I'm looking forward to it. So you did a great job tonight.
Thank you.
As we all know, the Board of Education plays a critical role in determining the policy that will improve the education of all our children, as well as making decisions that are fiscally responsible for all of us taxpayers. I believe a process or a forum involving open, honest communication and healthy debate will achieve both quality education and fiscal responsibility. The process starts with clearly defining what the issues are. And as I mentioned before, until the issues are well-defined, it is difficult and sometimes dangerous to jump to the solution. As a school board member, I will work toward ensuring that the relevant facts and information are used to develop a well-supported business case for each option presented and share this with the community. I want the community to know. Then I will work toward making sure that all costs associated with whatever options are chosen are clear and concise so that the public knows exactly what they are investing in. Not partial picture, the whole picture. I will, I will make sure that the taxpayers understand the complete picture. In summary, my main objectives as a school board member are high-quality, high-value education. Now, what I mean by that is I want our education system to continue teaching our children how to learn and develop them into disciplined and independent, critical thinkers. But I also want to balance that with making sure the direction we go is affordable to all of us taxpayers. I want clear, clear and concise communication. As I mentioned before, full disclosure now in an understandable and open format to avoid surprises in the future. Fiscal responsibility and accountability. I will strive for decisions made using the most current facts and information available. I will not be afraid to ask the tough questions. I will ensure that these questions, that the answers to these questions are clearly communicated to the taxpayers, but the tough questions must be answered. It would be an honor to serve on the Board of Education. I ask for your vote on February 17th, and thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you, Joe. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, the first announcement I have for you is the announcement of the primary on February 17th. And we obviously would ask each of you to take what you've learned today from these candidates and be sure that you express your right to vote. First thank you of the night, we've got Diane Gabriel back there. Diane, can you raise your hand back there? Let's, let's hear it for Diane. Thank you. We also have Tess and the ladies in the front row who helped. Would you stand up? And we'll thank these ladies for helping tonight. I would also like to ask our retiring superintendent, Mary Bowen Eggbroton, with, with the teachers in the district and employees of Hudson School District, if you'd stand up to receive our applause. I'd appreciate that. And last but not least, I'll ask for one last indulgence. I've often, yes, ma'am? Very good point. I, I think you, some of you may know there's literature from the candidates outside, and you can pick up that literature. I'm guessing the candidates may stay if you have individual questions for them, too. So, but our last thank you tonight, I often joke and say, rather than running for school board, I'd rather have a root canal and an enema at the same time. These people really deserve our appreciation. So if you would indulge me by standing up and giving them our applause for running for Thank you very much. My nuclear watch says we're 30 seconds early. Have a great evening.